So I'm gonna give just two more minutes or a couple more minutes. We're gonna see if we can get, make sure that Dr. Bika gets back on. So, oh, never mind. Thank you. Marissa just tells me she's in. So we will just call the meeting to order. Our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have no members of the public signed up for our public forum, so we will advance directly to our board and administrative reports, starting as always with our superintendent, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Nordin, board members and executive team members. During the week before spring break, I focused parts of that week in walkthroughs with principals and their mid-year evaluations and classroom visits. So I've shared previously two items I ask of them are their efforts in equity as a building leadership team and specific look fours and our classroom walkthroughs to calibrate our informal assessments. I know that walking throughout the school, students were certainly looking forward to spring break, and I know the teachers were too. We did have our final elementary principals meeting on March 22nd in preparation for our four-day schedule starting today. And I was so excited after listening to the principals. The meeting was focused on essential learning outcomes. I think principals felt confident. The only concerns they had were for that first day and how it would look. I'm very excited for members of our team and in school administration and the teaching staff to present later this evening. Very excited to hear about the kids' experience today as well. Also participate in the workshop with the team of our district and select principals, building culturally responsive system training with the DPI on March 23rd for the entire day. It's so helpful and critical to examine our systematic data and start to create action plans, preparation for next year to attack specific equity concerns. We're one of several districts in the state to participate. And in June, the outcome of the training is to develop a comprehensive plan to address and combat disproportionality in our district. A week before spring break, I was present for a DHS Zoom call with the DPI about the impact of the CDC guidelines from March 19. This was very helpful for Kim Kohler, Dr. Kai Ying Zhang, and me to be present and then further reinforce with the Eau Claire City County Health Department and share with us. Based on our review of the latest guidance from the CDC and our continued collaboration with those officials, we're getting a clearer picture of how we can best increase our in-person learning opportunities in the weeks ahead at the secondary level. We will immediately and continuously communicate any changes and how they will impact students' families. Through board meetings and district communications this spring and summer, we'll share updates on our plans for next school year, too. Our plans will consider several key factors, including future vital presence and spread, the availability of vaccines at different ages, and how we can best navigate cases and quarantines. We will continue working closely with the City County Health Department on all these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. For my board president's report, I have two items tonight. We have on our agenda tonight, as of the last item, a first reading of our complete set of new governance policies for the board to consider. This has been a year-long project and a multi-year discussion that has finally come into fruition in ECASD. So I'd like to offer my gratitude to my board colleagues for their dedication, efforts, and insight over the past year, even during the many changes and challenges to normal operation given the pandemic. I'd also like to thank Superintendent Johnson, the entire exec team, and the many staff, community members, and others throughout our district that have helped guide the development of this policy set. We will be considering this new model for adoption at our April 19th meeting, and it would not have been possible without the dedicated effort of many. Thank you. Secondly, as I'm sure almost all of you know, tomorrow is the annual spring election, and that includes elections for the ECASD school board. If you have not already voted via absentee ballot or early voting, please remember to go tomorrow and turn in your absentee ballot or cast your vote. As I mentioned in a recent media appearance, voting in local spring elections is one of the most powerful ways to help guide the future of the district. So be sure and cast your vote tomorrow. Thank you. We will now move on to our student representative reports. This week, we will start with our representative from Memorial High School, Emory Tool.
Hi. I don't have a ton to report tonight because we're just getting back from break. But ASPIRE testing is coming up pretty soon for underclassmen, I think, next week. And then AP tests are also rapidly approaching. They're coming up in just about three weeks till the first ones. AP students are definitely in that sort of intense preparation mode currently. Graduation is also approaching really quickly for seniors, which is pretty exciting because most of us are going to some sort of in-person post-secondary career or education. Similarly, incoming freshmen and then returning sophomores, juniors, and seniors next year are looking forward to returning to in-person and some sense of normalcy. I think overall, students are really ready to finish off this year strong, but they are very ready to get back to some sense of normal.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our representative from North High School, Zoe Wong.
Hello, everyone. I hope you all had a great spring break. Today was Cohort A's first day back from break. Although I was not at school today, it is a fair assumption that it was a rough Monday to get through. However, many students are looking forward to sports season's beginning. Athletes are excited to participate in activities they may not have in over a year. Students are also looking forward to possibly being able to attend those sporting events. For outdoor sports like football, baseball, soccer, and others, students should be able to attend, provided they follow COVID safety guidelines. Since those events are held outside, the risk of transmission is even lower when following protocols. Indoor events provide a greater challenge. However, students already come into contact with each other while inside and outside of school. And if someone is going to a sporting event with another person and sitting by them, they have most likely already come into contact with them. Therefore, students should be allowed to attend sporting events and other extracurriculars, provided that COVID safety protocols are being followed. All three music programs held live concerts in the weeks before spring break. They all performed both in-person and virtually to ensure a fun and safe environment so everyone could be involved. Student Council is busy planning many events at North. A big event coming up in a few weeks is prom. We have been working very hard to ensure a fun and safe event will be held. Friday, April 16th, there will be an informal event in the parking lot at North that will include music, yard games, and food trucks, and is open to all students. Saturday, April 17th, will be the formal event held downtown at the Lismore Hotel. We will be split into two different ballrooms where dinner and a movie will be served for all juniors and seniors. Finally, I would like to reiterate what I have stated in previous reports. The 2021-22 school year should return to full in-person learning while also providing a virtual option as well. For the majority of students, they need to be in school to receive a full education. Teachers have worked very hard this year to ensure we learn as much as we can, but with the way the cohorts are set up, it is nearly impossible for them to educate us as much as they would have in a normal year. For some students, the virtual option has given them the environment to flourish. Therefore, the virtual option should be more accessible than in previous years. Also, for the students and families that may not feel comfortable returning to school full-time. However, the majority of students need to be in school full-time while also having the extracurricular activities open to ensure school is as well-rounded as it can be. I acknowledge that there are concerns, but I believe that the value of our education outweighs those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to our committee, board committee reports. We'll start as always with budget development and Commissioner Harder.
Thanks. Good evening. We are the Budget Development Committee. We'll be meeting tomorrow at 3:30 PM to finalize our, with the hope of finalizing our recommendation for the full board on the question of ad hoc committees dedicated to the topic of compensation specifically and budget. And that's, those are ad hoc committees that engage our wider staff to get, to solicit ideas and opinions about solutions that are on the table to help save the district money and reduce our dwindling fund balance and to increase that fund balance. So looking forward to that meeting, and we hope to bring, again, the recommendation for our full meeting on the 19th, our full board meeting on the 19th. Thanks.
Thank you. Demographic trends and facilities planning, Kim Kohler.
And the committee met and looked at data, comparing data from the APL to projected enrollments from the district for next school year. We also took a peek at those enrollments and compared them to the current recommendation we have regarding elementary expansion. That recommendation was placed before the board in July of 2020. We expect to continue that conversation at our next meeting.
Thank you. LEAP, Jim Schmidt.
Yeah, the LEAP has not met since the board's last meeting, full meeting on March 15th. They meet a week from tomorrow.
Policy and Governance, last met on March 18th. We discussed recommended changes to Policy 133, Board Vacancies, which is on the agenda for later tonight. We then held preliminary discussions about two items. First, the committee discussed and recommended that the administration begin the process of changing all relevant district policies, to use gender-inclusive language. We will be continuing that discussion at our regular meeting this Thursday at 1 PM. Second, we considered possible changes to Policy 164, Board Member Accommodations Compensation Expenses and Equipment. This policy has not been updated significantly since at least 2003, and the committee had some discussion about whether increasing board member stipends into alignment with many other larger districts may help to recruit more possible board members that would reflect the diversity of our district. We agree that further discussion is warranted, including exploration of the salaries paid to other districts' board members. There was also discussion about supporting all of our staff as well as the board and how those considerations may need to play out. Finally, we continued the discussion about our SRO policy and examined district-wide discipline data not related to the SRO context. Kim Kohler is currently working to develop a short- and long-term action plan to identify and change structures in district policy and practice around discipline district-wide, including with the SRO policies that produce, trying to eliminate these policies and practices that produce disproportionate district discipline outcomes for our students of color. As ECASD is committed to anti-racist, anti-bias policy and structural change, we will be continuing this work going forward, and that will include Thursday as well. Thank you. Next, we move to our legislative update. Dr. Johnson.
Beginning today, everyone 16 and older is eligible to be vaccinated against COVID-19 in Wisconsin. On March 31st, Wisconsin Supreme Court ruled that Executive Order Number 8290 and the current face-covering order 105 are unlawful and declared them to be void. In February of 2021, the city of Eau Claire and Eau Claire County each adopted a face-covering ordinance that would go into effect if the face-covering orders issued at the state level were vacated. Based on the decision of the Supreme Court, these ordinance will now become effective immediately. These ordinance require any person who is age five or older, who is located indoors or in an enclosed space other than private residence, to wear a face cover. These ordinance remain in effect until June 30th of 2021, unless otherwise modified by the city council or the county board. On March 26th, the Department of Public Instruction clarified how it will calculate the allocation of certain federal ESRT-2 funds to 174 Wisconsin local education agencies or school districts. The DPI sought clarification from the Joint Finance Committee co-chairs on the definition of in-person instruction and how data would be collected. For this collection, in-person instructional hours are defined as hours in which pupils are together in the same physical location, being taught by a licensed teacher who is in the same location. Hours of virtual or other remote instruction may not be counted under any circumstances. On March 25th, the Department of Instruction also created a webpage titled "COVID Response and Relief Planning Recommendations", a resource page to assist districts in the use of the one-time federal COVID relief funds. The webpage includes several categories vetted by experts as allowable costs on the federal relief funds and will be updated regularly. In addition to the race for state superintendent and races for local school board seats on April 6th ballot, there will be 69 important school district referenda on the ballot as well. In comparison, there were 57 school district referenda on the ballot this same time last year. On March 19th, the Centers for Disease Control Prevention recommended all elementary school students remain at least three feet apart in classrooms where mask use is universal, regardless of whether community transmission is low, moderate, substantial, or high. In those same recommendations, the CDC recommends students should be at least, our middle school and high school students should be at least three feet apart in classrooms where mask use is universal and in communities where transmission is low, moderate, or substantial. Middle school students, high school students should be at least six feet apart in communities where transmission is high or where cohorts are not possible. The Wisconsin State Senate on March 17th passed Bill 69. This bill incorporates the Holocaust and other genocides into the state model social studies standards, requiring instruction on the Holocaust and other genocides. They also passed Senate Bill 39. This bill allows a pupil who attends a virtual charter school to participate in in-school athletic athletics and extracurricular activities in the pupil's resident school district. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to our consent agenda. The board considers items on the consent agenda with one vote. Without discussion, the board has been provided background material for each item or discussed it at a previous meeting. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's consent agenda includes Minutes of March 15th, 2021, Minutes of Closed Session, March 15th, 2021, Minutes of Work Session, March 29th, 2021, Human Resources Employment Report, Head Start Cost of Living Adjustment, COLA, for 2021-2022 Grant Budget, Ratification of ECASD and ECAE Master Agreement, Base Wage Increase Approval for Non-Affiliated and Hourly Staff, Preliminary Notice of Non-Renewal for Limited Term Contracts, Changes to Policy 441.2, Student Representation at School Board Meetings, Changes to Policy 536, Professional Staff Resignation, Changes to Policy 346, Student Assessment, Changes to Policy 361, Instructional Materials Selection and Evaluation, Changes to Policy 377, Philosophy of Athletics, Changes to Policy 447, Student Discipline and Positive Behavior Interventions, Changes to Policy 460, Student Scholarships and Awards, Changes to Policy 511, Equal Opportunity Employment, Changes to Policy 821, Social Media for District-Supported Sites, and Changes to Policy 840, Gifts to the Eau Claire Area School District. I would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Can we have this via roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clement?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. We have one individually considered item tonight. That is to suspend Board Policy 151.1, Policy Adoption Revision or Recision for Agenda Item 11.5. Agenda Item 11.5 is the discussion and possible first reading of Prohugpo's Coherent Governance Policies. The document in and of itself is 40 pages, and so we had discussion in agenda setting as to whether it was strictly required to read aloud all 40 pages. Because we didn't feel that that was a good use of anyone's 40-plus minutes, we reached out to the WASB as well as our district legal council to see if that were possible, as Policy 151.1 says that we do have to read them out loud. Both sources, WASB and our district legal council, said that there was no legal requirement for us to read policy changes aloud. And WASB actually expressed surprise that we were doing so as a policy. And so the agenda-setting team agreed to bring this item forward and to ask to suspend that policy tonight just for 11.5, so as not to spend 40 minutes reading, but more time discussing policy changes. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to suspend Policy 151.1 as it pertains to Item 11.5 on tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. We will apply that when we reach 11.5. We now adjourn to committee and our committee reports. Our first item tonight is the update on increased K-5 face-to-face learning. This was a request from Dr. Johnson when we made the modest shift to hear about the supports given to our staff in preparation and in lead-up to our first day. I'll now turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening. We're very excited tonight to present an update on our elementary transition of four-days-a-week programming. Today was day one, and all the kids and staff were looking forward to this day since board approval on February 24th. I'd like to thank so many for contributing to this process, executives, directors, directors, principals, and staff, all head-key components of this successful transition. This evening, I'd like to first thank and also introduce the following staff members who will be presenting tonight. Kim Kohler, Jim Schmidt, Manz Principal Adam Keaton, Robbins Principal Jake Donzie, Lake Shore Principal Colleen Minor, and Locust Lane Music Teacher Denise Schwartz. I will now transition to Kim Kohler. Thank you.
Good evening. We're happy to share today the pictures that you see on the screen right now. There really was quite a buzz in the district today, excitement in the air. And behind each of those masks that you see were smiling faces. We welcomed our elementary students back to four-day-a-week programming, and staff and students alike were very excited. We know that later in the presentation, we anticipate you'll hear what that looked like and felt like in the buildings, when Principals Donzie and Minor and Keaton talk a little bit more about how they got ready for today. But we wanted to share with you and begin with a celebration of all the happy kids that you see on the screen right now. Today, in fact, we welcomed 4,552 students to four-day-a-week programming. We also assisted eight students, well, actually, five students to transition to Cohort H. That's the home cohort. So those were the families that preferred not to return to school face-to-face four days a week, instead decided to stay home. So five students, we helped with programming in Cohort H. To get ready for today, we wanted to share with you that 128 students moved from Cohort C to face-to-face. This did require that 142 students were assigned to a new teacher. Now, 128 of those kids were from Cohort C. So those kids that were 100% virtual that returned to four-day-a-week programming today, plus a handful of others due to just some nuances in some schedules. This did require a few technology requests, but if you look in the grand scheme of things, with over 4,500 changes in programming, five technology requests seems like our technology department had a setup for success right from the beginning. So this was quite a big change for us today, and I wanted to start by showing you what has happened since that, since board approval on February 24th for the change in this model. So you can see here just some of the things that happened each week between the approval on the week of February 22nd. So we approved, or you approved on Wednesday of that week, on the 24th, all the way through this week or the week leading up to spring break so that we were ready. So since the board approved elementary students to return on February 24th, this slide shows some of that behind-the-scenes work. For example, immediately following that board decision, in fact, that same night, a letter with a link to a survey was sent to all elementary families in the district. In the transition to four-day-per-week programming, several departments pitched in, and you'll see that in various spots on this slide. Our Buildings and Browns Department really came through and ensured that desks and other furniture were moved into classrooms and were ready for students when they came today. So when every student came today, they had a place in the classroom just for themselves. The Technology Department made sure that student technology accounts were attached to the correct teacher, which seems like a simple sentence to say. But like lots of things with technology, it's way more complicated behind the scenes. So they attached students to a teacher, and when kids came to school today, it worked, which was great news for our kids. The Assessment Department made sure that student cohort and teacher assignments were accurate. And then Student Transit also finalized bus assignments and routes. You can see that elementary principals began meeting and planning almost immediately and continued really right up to this week. And we're going to share a little bit more of what that looks, what that looks like, and that will be the bulk of tonight's presentation. And then finally, we heard Commissioner Johnson talk a little bit about vaccines and his update. You can see that we started, staff started having, or getting vaccines the week of March 1st. And we're happy to report that before spring break, 91% of staff reported having at least the first shot of the vaccine. So that helped us feel better about having more students in each classroom. As principals started to tackle how they would prepare for students coming back to four-days-a-week programming beginning today, elementary principals really identified three large areas that required attention. And you can see those areas here: learning and assessment, communications, and operations. And so what I would like to do is introduce Principals Adam Keaton, Colleen Minor, and Jake Donzie, who are with us tonight and would like to share more with you about what each of these areas entailed and the work that principals and other staff did behind the scenes so that today was smooth for students. And so with that, Adam, I believe you are Operations and Logistics. I will hand it off to you.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, ECASD Board, ECASD exec team, and the broader community. Like Kim head chair, my name is Adam Keaton. I'm the principal here at Manz Elementary School, and I'm representing the Operations and Logistics group. Each of the logos that you see before you represents a piece or a part of the logistical puzzle that we engaged in dialogue and problem-solving around. So I'm just gonna take a quick minute and focus a little bit of my time tonight on the heavy lift that our group did. Just generally, our focus was to try to create solutions focusing on some of the non-academic and instructional parts of the school experience, a little bit of kind of that 10,000-foot view and how we lifted this off the ground with some of the behind-the-scenes efforts. We examined what was tight at the elementary level. In terms of what was tight, we were looking at, these are the elements of the school experience that we wanted to have consistency amongst all of our buildings. And then what also could be loose, school by school, based on the nature of our building, the layout of our schools, and so on and so forth. So although not necessarily an exhaustive list, I'll just take a quick minute of your time and give you a brief overview of this collaborative work. Much of the work of the Operations and Logistics team focused a bit on sort of what I consider a review and revise. So we reviewed the practices from September up until March and then revised it in a way that made our return to four days of in-person learning work well for our students and staff at the elementary level. So that we started this work by taking a peek at our master schedule and making sure that K through 5, that that was a tight. But this also included the art, music, and physical education along with library-media schedules due to increases in in-person learning for some of those subjects. So in-person physical education, in-person music, and a bit of a hybrid yet in-person library-media experience at our building levels. We also did a review/revised of our lunch schedules to ensure that safe transitions to and from, along with ample time to prep for lunch, eat our lunches, and clean up from lunch, was embedded into our instructional day. The entire elementary leadership group collaborated with Food and Nutrition to examine possible changes to the meal delivery mechanisms to make sure that we met the needs of our students. And after day one, so far, so good. We also did a review/revised of staff schedules and supports to reflect the changes embedded in our master schedule. So we made sure that we reallocated staff time to ensure staff supervision and student supervision was met. And we also did a review/revised of our classroom spaces in terms of what, if, or changes needed to be made within the classroom setting. And I'll just kind of share a few brief examples. Looking once- And I'll just kind of share a few brief examples. Looking once we've moved to the Cohort D framework with a combination of both A and B, required some additional study and review of desks, tables, and general classroom layouts that through kind of an updated CDC guidance on safe physical distances was mirrored and followed. This review included safe practices for both students and staff. Our group also reviewed the general school-wide mitigation strategies that we've had ongoing throughout the entire year to help prioritize student-staff safety. Masks, handwashing, sanitizing practices, and avoiding the mixing of classroom cohorts remained top billing and top priority to maintain safe practices school-wide, and that was a tight. We also did a review and revise of our arrival and dismissal protocols along with student transit, and then this was work done along with Jim Fay at Student Transit to help continue to safely manage the start and end of the school day for our students and families. And again, after day one, things looked pretty peaceful and pretty great. It probably didn't hurt that it was 81 today at 3:40 when we dismissed, but I digress. We also finally just collaborated on a few what-if scenarios. We wanted to make sure that we were planning ahead to into April and May. In event, we need to have some adjustments made. And so we did a little bit of gaming around what-ifs, and we have some discussions and plans in place should the status quo change between April and early June. So in a nutshell, that was the work of the Operations and Logistics Team. Thank you.
All right. I am Colleen Minor.
Go ahead, Colleen.
I'm Colleen Minor, Principal of Lake Shore, and we were tasked with, my colleagues were tasked with, we were a part of the communication team, and so Adam did a great job of describing all the different areas that we needed to address. And so our job as the communication team was to put that information together in a way that was consistent for families across all 13 elementary schools. As all of us were working on the same outcome of bringing our kindergarten, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students back safely, we also know we needed to communicate some of the very same, similar areas that Adam had identified. So what was the same and now what was different? So what we did was we created a template, and the template included like what does the classroom have? And it had like what it was earlier this year to now April, May, and June. And we followed that throughout the, for the classroom, the specials, music, art, fayed, and library. We included breakfast, lunch, some of our safety mitigation strategies that we were doing, what Wednesdays would look like now that we had transitioned to that. Some parents were wondering, so now what do Wednesdays look like? So we included information on that as well as arrival and dismissal and bus. And so what this template created was the structure so that we now, each principal could individualize what they needed for their building. But we knew we all had to address these areas, and this was just some talking points that we could go through. So that way, as we're all working collaboratively as a principal group, are we covering everything? And also, are we communicating that to families so that way everybody knows what to expect? So again, our template was what had we already been doing between the start of the year until now, and then what was going to be different? And so this way, each building could individualize it, because obviously not every building can operate the same, but this way, parents had consistent communication across all of the elementary schools of what to expect. And so that was what we worked on as a team, and really, we couldn't do our work without the Operations and Logistics. So it truly was a team effort of all the elementary principals coming together and figuring out, okay, how does this work? What does it look like? And how do we communicate that to families? So that wraps our communication team, and it was exciting to have the students in the building today. A lot of great excitement that we had.
Thank you, Colleen.
So good evening. Our third work team we discussed earlier is the Learning and Assessment Team, and this work has been ongoing throughout the school year and became even more focused since February 24th and that decision from the board. Tonight, the principal's leader, that team Jake Donzie from Robbins, will share the others in this area. In joining him is Denise Schwartz, a music teacher from Locust Lane who will represent music, art, and physical education programs, or better known internally as MAE. So I'd like to welcome Jake and Denise to leave the next phase of the discussion.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to speak here this evening. First of all, just in reference to what Ms. Kohler said earlier in terms of the smiles underneath those masks today, and that went for the staff as well, to see art and music and fayed happening with the kids in person in library and the enthusiasm from the staff and the flexibility to make it happen was really, I mean, it was just a treat today. It was like our second first day of school, and I know I can speak for all of the principals for that. It really was quite a fun day to have that many kids. I mean, to have 500 kids back in the building was really exciting for everyone. So a really great opportunity, and we're excited about April, May, and June here. Now, more specifically with learning and assessment, as you can see here, in a year such as this one, where we had kids spread out into so many different cohorts, knowing the what and the when in terms of our curriculum was extremely important because we were operating on a lot of different levels with a lot of different kids and a lot of different proctors out there working with our students. So a group of people that was led by teacher leaders, and I know Becky Graff, Lori House, and a number of others, I think there are a number of people working through this, created a bit of a guide for everyone that was our essential learning plan. So there were resources. There was a year at a glance, every month you could see. So really, the what and the when, the scope and sequence were really laid out for teachers in an excellent way. As I'll say in a future slide here, I think they want that group to continue because it's been so successful and so specific in terms of what students should be learning and what our teachers will be teaching each and every month. So it really also integrated our social and emotional learning explicitly in there, which has been so essential this year with kids that have either been 100% at home or three days a week they were home, and then integrating all that together so that the social and emotional learning component has been so important. So moving on to the next slide, as you can see, there's kind of a reference to what one of these essential learning overviews looks like. Teachers follow a SEL playbook, a social-emotional learning playbook, and equity tools where things are laid out really, really well and explicitly for teachers to know what we need to teach, when. One of the biggest discussions in this group, and probably the most challenging, was how to move forward with our information. How do we move forward when some kids may not be, have mastered yet, and other ones are beyond this depending on where they were in their learning? And that's always a difficult discussion all the time because in every classroom, there are kids that are beyond where you are, kids that are struggling to get to where you are, and the kids that are exactly where you're teaching. So the big decision that was made was essentially like what we're going to do every year anyway as teachers is you really, you move forward and you differentiate for those who are struggling, and you differentiate for those who are high flyers. So you end up doing the best you can to keep everybody challenged in the proper way. So that can be really difficult, but then you also give as many resources as you possibly can, be it interventionists or interventions or accelerated options, that type of thing, in a class where you differentiate to make sure everybody's getting what they need. And a year such as this one, we know that's going to be a challenge as everybody comes back, and again, in the fall as well. So it got a really positive response from teachers regarding this process, and like I said before, we'd really like to continue this moving into next year. Moving forward into the next slide, we also have taken a look at our assessments. This has been a unique year in terms of our assessments because we were, again, on a lot of different platforms all over the place. So we're really curious to see how students are doing in all the different formats. So what this, what you can see on this slide is we can actually look at student growth, whether it's a low student growth, typical or high, and where you want children, of course, is typical or high, where they're getting at least one year's growth in one year's time. Low means they're not achieving that, and high, of course, they're getting more than one year's growth in one year's time. So you want your students in that typical or high range, and these printouts and this data that we can look at as a staff really help us focus in on those students to see where we might be struggling and also where we're succeeding. And then we can analyze those things and figure out what we can do from there in terms of moving forward. And we've been training our teachers in terms of how to analyze this. We'll be doing this throughout, you know, April and May, even as we prepare even for next year on using this kind of data. And then something more specific on the next slide, where it talks about our common assessments that we're using. This is more building by building, but even within that building, we can see in the various strands and domains how students are doing. And see, it's one of those things that you might hear about that, okay, question six, everybody struggled with question six, but at this other building, people did really well on question six. So what are they doing in this other building that maybe we can take advantage of here? Kind of your classic PLC way of looking at things in that way. So these are local assessments. They've been designed by our own teachers, and it's a way to go back and look at those to see how effective we are in the various standards and the domains that we're working on. And I'll turn this over to Denise, who's going to talk a little bit about the changes in our music, art, and fayed.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Denise Schwartz, and I teach at Locust Lane Elementary. And I want to thank you for asking to have the music, art, and fayed departments be represented tonight for our perspective as we transition back into our in-person teaching. I can't say that I speak for everyone, of while still educating those who have chosen to stay virtual, and we appreciate that opportunity. As is often the case, each elementary school has been unique in how they've transitioned back to four days a week, especially in our MAE department. Some will be meeting in the classroom, while others are able to meet in the music rooms and gymnasiums and/or cafeterias and even outside, especially on a day like today. Some of the lessons will be live streamed to other classrooms, while others may be recording lessons and having GSA supervise the other classrooms, much like art and library haven't been doing up to this point. Finally, I know we appreciate all that's been done to help our students continue to have solid music, art, and physical education for those families who've continued to take advantage of those combinations made during this last year. The one place I feel comfortable, pretty comfortable anyway, speaking for my fellow MAE colleagues, is that Maple, I should say colleagues, is the importance we all feel in having equitable music, art, and fayed opportunities for our students for their social-emotional learning, and we will continue to work hard for all the
Give it back to Jake.
Thank you, Denise. And so with that, we would like to conclude the presentation, but open it up for any discussion or questions from commissioners.
Go ahead, Dr. Johnson.
So I have two questions. The first, could you address for me the how were IEP concerns addressed by changing the instructional model at the elementary level, especially as it pertains to certain support services being provided? That's my first question. And then the second question is, could anyone speak to as weather has improved or less, or milder here? Where is a discussion about the utilization of outdoor space? But if outdoor space has not been part of the discussion, where is the discussion about ensuring that if safe, the opening of windows to address ventilation and indoor air quality? Thank you.
So I think if I can have Mandy maybe address the first question regarding IEPs, and then Jake or Colleen or Adam, if one of you would talk about how staff are using outdoor spaces and/or opening up the windows after Mandy is done, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, I can certainly address the question regarding IEP services. So once the decision was determined that elementary students would return to four days, IEP teams and school IEP teams began looking at what services would look like in order to meet the needs of the students that they were working with. Conversations, internal conversations were happening among staff, and then also connecting with the parents. Sometimes IEP teams had to come together to look at how, what those services would look like, how to best meet the needs with the changes. Once that was determined, IEPs were updated to reflect those services, and then building staff then worked together to coordinate and collaborate to ensure that those services would be ready to go coming April 5th.
Does that clarify for you?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So Colleen, Adam, or Jake, would one of you want to address the utilization of outdoor spaces?
I don't mind. I'm happy to kind of weigh in if it helps. I mean, it was a little bit of the conversation in terms of the Operations and Logistics Group, and in a nutshell, Commissioner Johnson, no stone unturned. So ventilation, windows, certainly as the weather, you know, turns the corner for more nicer weather, we can certainly add that layer, you know, ventilation with the windows open, that's certainly an option. As is outdoor education, we, it's going to be kind of school-by-school dependent in terms of spaces and places where kids feel like they can continue their education outdoors without, you know, too many distractions or finding a relatively comfortable, dry place to sit. But certainly, those are parts of the conversation, I would imagine, not just at, you know, my elementary school, but probably all of the elementary schools in the district trying to find unique learning opportunities for students across the district outside or inside. So I hope that that kind of supports and answers some of your questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Other comments or questions from board members? Commissioners, sir.
I just want to say that as an educator in a classroom who has been separated from half of her students for the entire year, this is the first time I've gotten really emotional. So for the year that you guys have had and for the work that you've done to get to today, I just want to thank you for the tremendous amount of work. I know that it hasn't been an easy year, and the considerations and to make this as easy and as safe as possible, we're all just very, very grateful. Well, thank you.
Commissioner Harder.
I'll just take on to that. It was a parent with four boys in the district. Only one of them's in elementary, but it's, this is huge. And seeing the amount of work that it takes, both through these presentations and a little bit behind the scenes as a board member and just as a parent, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is, this is great. Very much appreciated.
I said earlier today to Superintendent Johnson that it was very affirming as a board member to see the intentionality and the effort that was put in, not just by the superintendent and the executive team, although we are grateful for that too, but the inclusion of principals, teachers, and voices up and down the district to make in this transition and throughout this entire pandemic year. So I'll just echo the thanks and gratitude of my colleagues as well. We really appreciate the effort that's been put in here, and we know that the effort continues to move forward with, for our secondary students as well, and we look forward to that work. And I want to pre-thank you for that continuing work through the rest of the year for all of our students pre-K through 12 in the district. Also, thank you for the positive push, and thank you to all of our staff who have decided to go and get the vaccine. I think all of us here in the boardroom, and I'm certain those of the members at home, but I know there was a reaction here in the boardroom when Kim, you shared with us the 91% had been able to get that. I know for me, it was a feeling of relief when I was able to get my vaccine a week and a half ago, and we're so thankful for our staff to step up and take that leadership role in making our district and our community that much safer because that's how we can come back and give more to our students. So thank you to our staff and those across the district who are getting that vaccine. If you have, now that you, all people 16 and up have that opportunity, please go out and register for your vaccine if you haven't already. So thank you so much. Thank you to our principals and teachers that presented tonight, or teacher that presented tonight. We love hearing from those of you in the field. We'll move on now to the discussion and possible first reading of proposed changes to Policy 133, Board Vacancies. This was a discussion at P&amp;G that hopefully some of the language could be streamlined in the Board Vacancies. Abby and Meta told us that every time it comes up, they have to reread and kind of translate. And so we did ask them to go back and look and see if there were ways that they could at least streamline some of the policy to make it easier to figure out when we have a board member, for whatever reason, that resigns in the middle of a term and we must appoint a new board member. So I will quickly read 2, 2 through 4, that has all of the changes, and then we'll open it up if there is any we'll open it up if there is any discussion. The successful applicant must receive a majority of all members, four votes. If there are more than two applicants, a first ballot shall be taken. If no one receives a majority, four votes, the candidate, candidates receiving the lowest number of votes shall be dropped unless that leaves only one remaining candidate. In that situation, the vote shall be taken repeatedly until at least two candidates remain after dropping those with the lowest number of votes. B, once a candidate or candidates have been dropped, a vote shall be taken on the remaining candidates. C, steps A and B shall be repeated until one candidate receives at least four votes. D, if a tie occurs between two remaining candidates, voting shall occur two more times for a total of three. If there is a tie on the third vote, heads and tails shall be assigned to the two candidates and a coin shall be flipped by the clerk or clerk designee to determine the appointment. Three, the person so appointed shall serve in that capacity until a successor is elected in the next school board election. Four, a qualified elector who is selected to fill a board vacancy shall not take office unless and until they have taken and signed the oath of office. The oath shall be filed on or before any date or deadline the board establishes for the appointee to take office. Upon taking and signing the oath, the individual will file a campaign registration statement if required to do so by law. Is there any comment or question on these proposed changes? Hearing none, we'll move it to the consent agenda for our next meeting. We'll now move on to discussion and possible first reading of proposed changes to policy 423, public school open enrollment. And we're also going to do policy 424, participation of non-public school students in district programs and courses. I'm putting these two together for both our read and discussion because they are sort of related and Kim, if you would give us a brief overview of the work on this before we read.
Kim or Mandy?
Isn't this you? Is this what public school open enrollment? Isn't this you?
I thought it was because it was the special education piece of it. I can speak to open enrollment and I'll speak to open enrollment and alternate school requests, which we have reversed, or tuition waiver, which we have reversed. So what we did with this document with, with this policy was we, we looked at current DPI guidance, which typically, which typically is updated almost annually and we just made sure that our policy was current with DPI guidance. And then the other thing that we did was really look at what are some of the policies and procedures or some of the policies, procedures that could be out of policy perhaps and inter rule. Finally, what we did was we had two policy numbers that were reversed in our policies versus WASP policy and so we corrected that. So those are things that you will see really being an update in language. More specifically, and one of the reasons that we had this update in even kind of on our radar was special education and Mandy can speak more to the special education piece of it than I can, so if you don't mind if I pass that piece off to her.
Of course.
So the proposed changes in the policy were made so that we would have the appropriate language that we would need in certain situations, like the first one there, or when a student is seeking open enrollment during a special education evaluation, just getting the correct language in there that would have then allow us flexibility and clarity on what steps need to be taken. So that language there helps with that piece there. If you were to page down a little bit more. Oh, maybe I'm thinking of another, maybe I'm thinking of the rule. Probably we did move a lot into, as much into rule as we could. So other changes that we proposed were just putting the appropriate language in the policy and the rule to give us the flexibility that we need in order to make decisions on whether or not a student that has an IEP can be approved or denied. So when we look at being able to deny open enrollment for special education, we need to ensure that we have the services available to support that student. And with how current language was, we didn't have the ability to deny a student, but yet we are still accountable for providing the services to the student, even though within our district, we might not have the means to do that. So the changes that we proposed gives us the flexibility that we need to do that with also then following law of what we're required to do as well. Does that provide clarity?
Yes, thank you. So we'll read and discuss 423 and then we'll read and discuss 424. If I could ask one of my colleagues to volunteer to read 423, just section three here, students referred for a special education evaluation for us. Dr. Johnson.
An open enrollment application may be denied if the non-resident student has been referred or identified as having a possible disability but has not yet been evaluated by an IEP team in the resident district. To the extent permitted by DPI and assuming other acceptance criteria are and continue to be met, such a student's parent or guardian may request that the district reconsider a denial under this criteria if the IEP or a finding of no disability is forwarded to and reviewed by the district and if the district concludes that such reconsideration would not be prejudicial to any other applicant. If the non-resident district approves the open enrollment application, the non-resident district should complete the evaluation. And if the student is found eligible, develop an initial IEP and determine if it has available the special education related services to provide a placement. If the non-resident district does not have available the special education related services, it may terminate the open enrollment. The resident district would then be responsible for adopting or revising the IEP and offering a placement to implement the IEP.
Thank you. Comments or questions on 423? Hearing none, we'll place that on the consent agenda for next time. Let's move on to 424, participation of non-public school students in district programs and courses.
Would you like me to provide a summary of this one as well?
Yes, please.
All right. So participation of public, public school courses and programs, we do have students who are open enrolled to other districts that would like to attend two school or two courses in our district and they, they are allowed to do that. We also have students who may attend a surrounding district, their district of residence, but would like to come here just for a couple of courses. And then that typically happens with some of the specialized courses that we have. For example, some of our upper level courses or our AP courses. Perhaps a smaller district cannot offer those, so they'll, they'll ask to open enroll just for two courses in Oak Claire. So we do have that. And then we also have private school students who live in the district or homeschool students who live in the district who ask just to attend part-time. So that's what this policy is referring to. It's, it's students who would like to attend part-time in our district and part-time is defined as up to two courses per semester. So what this policy does is it outlines what the requirements are and again, that goes back to DPI language. So we were looking for compliance with the guidelines from the DPI. And again, anything that was more procedural, just tried to clean up policy and keep policy as policy and then procedural, put in an exhibit and/or rule. So those are the changes that you will see. One thing that is important to note on this one is if you look at that last paragraph that says, right before the red text, "A home-based private educational program student who resides in the district may participate in interscholastic athletics and extracurriculars." Their ability to do that hasn't changed, but sometimes what families misunderstand is the difference between a home-based private educational program and I learn at home through a virtual program from another district. The virtual program from another district is not actually homeschooling. So that's why we put home-based private education to try to help families discern between I'm open enrolled into another district versus my parents are homeschooling me. And again, that guidance, the ability to do that comes from the DPI.
Thank you, Kim. Commissioner Alliance has volunteered to read this policy for us.
Participation in public school courses and programs. Non-public school students, private school and home-based private educational program students may participate in courses and programs in the district as follows. Number one, a private school student may take up to two high school courses per semester provided the following conditions are met. A, the student meets the district's high school admission requirements. B, the student resides in the district. And C, there is sufficient space in the classroom. Number two, a home-based private educational program student, whether he, she resides in the district or not, may take up to two courses during a semester at their resident school in the district provided the following conditions are met. A, the student has met the standards for admission at that grade level as required by law and is established by the student has met the standards for admission at the grade level as required by law and as established by the district or designee. B, there is sufficient, there is sufficient space in the classroom. And C, the student is taking no more than two courses in any public school in the state during any semester. Number three, a non-public school student resides in the district may participate in district educational programs or services when specifically required by law, e.g., summer school programs and programs for students with disabilities. Non-public school students attending any courses pursuant to this policy are generally subject to the same course requirements, attendance policies and behavior expectations as are applicable to the district's public school students. Similarly, to the extent permitted by law, non-public school students will be required to meet the same mandatory requisites or alternative demonstrations or competency that apply to public school students seeking to take a particular course. Non-public school students participating in public school courses and programs under this policy shall be responsible for their own transportation to and from public school, except as otherwise required by law. Participation in interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities. A home-based private educational program student who resides in the district may participate in interscholastic activity, athletics and extracurricular activities in the district on the same basis and to the extent, the same extent that students enrolled in the district are allowed to participate. The home-based private educational program in which the student is enrolled shall provide the district with a written statement that the student meets the district's requirements for all, for participation in interscholastic activities or extracurricular activities based on age and academic disciplinary records.
Thank you. I will start with a quick comment in number two. The district is beginning work to change language to be gender inclusive. I would like it if instead of he, she, it could just be changed to whether the student resides in the district or not, to eliminate the gender language there, unless there's objection from the others. Additional comments or questions? Hearing none and with that change, we can move it to the consent agenda for next time. Our final item on the agenda tonight is discussion and possible first reading of proposed coherent governance policies. In accordance with our motion earlier tonight to suspend Board Policy 151.1 for this item, we will not be reading all 39 pages of policy aloud. So we will move directly into a discussion period. The policies themselves are available for the public on board docs here. They are hopefully going to be made available via the website or getting in contact with the district. We welcome feedback, so please go ahead and get those and read them and let us know over time. The board did work on these policies as a whole at our work session last Monday and the changes that were discussed at that work session were made and incorporated into this set tonight. Thank you to Meta and also Patty Iverson for their work in translating the policies over and preparing them for board docs and other PDFs. That was very helpful this week and of course, thank you to all of you. So at this time, I guess I will just open it up to conversation for, sorry, excuse me, from board members, if there's any things that you'd like yet to discuss, changes that you'd like to, amendments, I guess, that you'd like to make to the proposed policy or anything else on your mind as we will then bring this forward for consideration for adoption at our next meeting. I will say that many of us on the board are teachers in one capacity or another and I certainly have gone through my wait time mantra in my head for teaching several times here. So you're all putting us all to the test and showing why wait time is so important. But once again, if there are any comments or questions, we certainly don't need to have additional discussion if there's nothing on members' minds, but I want to have, make sure that we give a good, solid amount of time for people to ask questions or bring anything up that they need to. Go ahead, Dr. Johnson.
In light of the conversation that took place with, with WASP and legal consult about the suspension of board policy, I guess what interests, what caught my, my, my attention was that they were surprised that we were reading aloud. Where would it be possible to, is that governance culture where we potentially reexamine, make that permanent?
Well, since it is not in our governance culture currently that we will read policy changes aloud, then that, if, should we adopt this set of policies, we would be governed by this and we would no longer read policy changes aloud unless we went back in and changed it to that. In addition, the district level policies that we've been working on and reading aloud would become the, I guess, property of, of the district administration and they would be able to work on and adopt those and change those policies with the authority of the board as is spelled out in, in the board superintendent policies. So they would be able to make those changes on their own. Those changes would be reported back to the board in various monitoring reports, so we would always know what those policy changes were and be able to discuss and, and monitor them, but they would no longer be read aloud either.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. It does occasionally seem onerous to read the policies aloud and I think Commissioner Alliance could speak to that just today.
Yeah.
I just want to say, and this is just my, I'm just going to interject some humor, is as the junior most member of this board, I just learned, I'm just feeling like I'm getting my feet under me 10 months in here with, with how things really work. And so the fact that we're, you know, considering changing everything gives me great, it gives me a great amount of butterflies in my stomach and I'm feeling very nervous about the process and, and yet rather excited for it and, and excited to learn as we go and grow as we go with it. Um, and I guess my only, my only question is really, um, how, how, can, can I ask how, Mike, how, how is, how is, how are you feeling? How is the executive team feeling um, as we approach consideration and, and adoption of policy or of coherent governance?
Well, I think last. I think last Monday's. I think last Monday's uh, meeting did help, um, but I think when it comes down to it, it really, as I reviewed the drafts and, and we talked about things here, it, it is quite a bit of work, but once again, it's incumbent upon me to uh, front-load so much of this information where we discuss as an administrative team or executive team, but also share that information with the board. Um, I think once we start developing our targets and going through our goals, um, you know, the calendar has helped in having some discussion about that and having some feedback, but you know, ultimately, other districts are doing this too. I'm getting some, um, some hints from, from my peers out in the field, just like uh, we have enjoyed the Forest's assistance, but you know, it's somewhat exciting. You talked about being the most junior member of the board, I, I consider myself a rookie too, where we're all learning this together, but um, I certainly feel better every time we have meetings and discuss, discuss this process. So it, it will be a learning experience, but I think it will be a, a positive one. Um, like I said, probably the most important part would be when I get together with, with our executive team and also other administrators and collaborate and with staff and then to share that information with the board well ahead of time and as comprehensively as possible.
I um, I kind of feel like I might be a little too close to the fire. Um, I was involved quite a bit in some of the writing and editing of the operational expectations and one of the things that I am excited about doing is getting the process started. I think that it will be a continuous improvement kind of exercise in the fact that we find out what really uh, fits us like a glove and what things we might want to tweak and change to really kind of make it an Eau Claire area school district coherence governance process. So I'm ready to get started and I think that uh, this process has been really helpful. I think you've done a great job leading this, Tim, and uh, I'm ready to uh, to start thinking as a board member at a thirty thousand foot uh, level and see where that goes.
Yeah, I'll just follow up with a similar sentiment. I mean, I've been doing this for a few years and it, you know, Commissioners, you talked about getting your feet uh, in terms of how things work and I, I've, I've, what I've found is more and more as we've operated the way we operate, which has changed a little over the years, but not a lot, but that it, it has more and more felt dysfunctional and that we're, in, in the sense of, things we've said to all many times before, but I'll just say it again, I think it bears repeating, is that the focus of this very precious brief time that we have together is, is spent on the thing that is most worthy of that attention. And I, I think that's, that's what excites me about coherent governance and I'm really grateful to the board and to our executive team for, for working through and, and coming up with a plan. I think it looks like a good plan, you know, we, we don't know, but we're, I, I'm, I'm excited about it and I'm excited to try it and to start using it and improving it. And so uh, thanks, thanks to everybody for, for the effort here, it's, it's amazing.
Thank you, Dr. Nardine. Um, so as someone who works a lot on policy uh, in a, in a different type of institution, I'm, I'm really impressed with how this has come together i- in a relatively succinct format, given the scope uh, and size of their institution. I am um, in various places tempted to recommend adding more details, uh, but then I have to kind of wrestle with myself about focusing on the outcomes um, and the measurements and, and less on um, making sure that everything in the kitchen sink is addressed in every policy. Uh, so I think, I think that'll be an ongoing struggle, uh, just with coherent governance in, in general is um, focusing on the outcomes a- as Commissioner Harder indicated, uh, and just kind of providing that, that policy guidance to the district um, in how we, how we conduct ourselves and how we reflect, how our vision and values should be carried out through our operational policies and our performance expectations. So um, you know, I think, I think there's a, there's a few tweaks here and there, but again, um, at, at this point, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we've hit everything that we, that we want to. Uh, and um, I eager to, to see how, how it works, uh, get our, get our feet wet, uh, and, and hope that it is um, meeting our expectations and our, and our promise for how we can focus our time effectively and make sure that we give the district the resources and latitude to make really well-informed decisions within the outcomes we expect.
Yeah, I'm happy to wait if someone, if there's another initial question. But um, my, I, I guess my question is related to, it's just the, in thinking about the committee discussion, um, and about kind of where policy and governance might be right now and some of the policies that are being discussed. When you were talking with Dr. Johnson a minute ago about um, how the, the kind of the, the bulk of what we have in place for policy will become, that will kind of shift over to the district, um, what will that mean for the work that we are currently doing? Will, will it just kind of stop? So I'm just thinking about things like SRO policy or other things that policy and governance has been working on. Where will that go? Like what will happen to, to the work that's kind of like, and demographic and trends, like what, what, what's just going to happen? Are we gonna, in, in a month, will we be talking about, will we know, will we even consider those things anymore?
Uh, just like, for policy and governance perspective, the SRO policy, the discipline, the school-based discipline policy, that work that Kim is bringing to us on Thursday is not going to stop, it's going to continue. The board and, the board and committee have both made their expectations clear there. And I think the, the policy set that we have also makes our expectations clear in the realm of, say, equity, that we expect not only plans, but actual changes and action uh, within those plans and, and to hold accountable to that. So uh, the same thing with, you know, we mentioned language around uh, gender inclusive language in our policies, that work will not stop. Uh, it, just the, the committee, that extra hour and a half every other week, that part will not be there and the board will address and receive those updates as a whole, rather than primarily Dr. Johnson, Commissioner Clements, and myself. So we'll all get to see that, those things moving on. If and when the administration would like, you know, board feedback on some of those things, then perhaps we can, we would, I'm certain that we would provide that, but it is then their responsibility to that. We are, checkpoints come in with our policy monitoring. The current draft version of the calendar, and there may have to be a few tweaks, so we may have to reapprove the, the year-long calendar after I uh, meet with Superintendent Johnson about the, the few items that the executive team had. The current calendar has the OE2, the equity so, commitment, I believe the, the, the policy monitoring for that is in September. So we will not go long, we will give time to develop the work that needs to be developed, but we will not go long before we hit our main commitment on that one. And that will of course include, I'm sure, updates on what is being done on these policies that we're working on. Uh, in terms of demographic trends, uh, demo and trends and leave, they continue to work without board direct involvement and we'll get updates from them just as we, you know, have. It may or may not be within each meeting, but those, you know, written updates can come to us in other ways as well. So the work is not going to stop, we're just going to empower the administration to take the expectations of the board and let them actually work on those things rather than spending as much time reporting back to us on them, except at the appropriate times for the monitoring. Because we, again, we won't let it go, but we'll focus on it when it's, you know, when it needs to be focused on. Seeing no additional requests for the floor, uh, we'll add this as an individually considered item next time. I, I know that all of us have had, you know, some backing forth ideas about it, so we won't put it on consent, we'll give everybody a chance to speak on it next time as well, uh, but we'll have uh, adoption on the agenda for our next meeting. At this time, I would hear requests for future agenda items. And hearing none, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
If you moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
Thanks.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.